We're not all finished.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
We are live streaming.
Alright, yeah. We can still be personable.
Absolutely. I just, I just like to give everybody a, give everybody the word that we are officially, uh, live to the world, so.
You're telling us you're gonna clean it up now, right?
I am telling you no such thing. That is, that is your decision.
Clean as the snow, but we don't have any right now.
Wow, I'm looking at the bottom of my computer, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Being the military man I was, it'd be eighteen hundred hours.
I got, mine's saying three minutes left.
Really?
I got five fifty-seven.
I got three and a half.
Google's ahead of everybody.
I just clicked over to fifty-eight. And mine's just about ready to go over there, too. There. Roger's here from Florida, right?
He's zooming from Florida?
Yes, he can.
Oh, okay.
Well, he's, he's not elected.
Yeah, he's not an elected official.
You were talking about here, somebody else.
You.
I'm in, I'm in my den at home.
Oh, I thought you were in Florida.
Well, we were for a couple of weeks and we're gonna go back to, after, uh, near, near the end of December. We've called off all family get-togethers and holidays, so, uh, we're hanging out here for a while and then heading back down.
Just a nice backdrop.
If you, if you, uh, talk real nice to the city manager, sometimes he can help you out.
Well, that would be really different if I talked nice to the city manager.
I don't think, I don't think Mike would know how to act, John, if he's talked to him nice.
I could, uh, eliminate my cry sessions before I go to bed.
Brian, are you off crutches yet?
Not off mute.
Says he's not muted, but he's not making any noise.
He's not making noise, he's not getting paid.
The only one I don't see here is, uh, our Vice Mayor.
How about now? Yes, today's my first day on my own two feet in a while, so.
I have six o'clock. This is Holly, um, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting in order. We are ready to go. Um, Andrew, do we, I assume you're gonna need to explain the format, what people have to do?
Sure, once again, we're back to virtual meetings, um, for commissioners, uh, as was, was in his standard protocol. If you got questions or something or wish to be recognized by the mayor, if you could use the raise hand feature, I think that helps us out. Um, we'll have to do everything by roll call vote. Uh, for those people attending, guests, I think I only see one member of our media, but if we have any other attendees and they wanna be recognized, um, they can use the raise hand feature during public comment periods. I'll go ahead and skip the part about, uh, people coming in by phone because I don't think we have any, but, uh, if they come in, I'll, I'll go ahead and give the instruction at that point, but I think otherwise, we're good to go, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, can we say the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
All goes well.
Alright, um, tonight's invocation is offered to us by, I saw there he is, Pastor Doug Carr. Uh, Pastor Carr, you're on.
Alright, let's pray. Father, we ask your blessings over the city of Sturgis, over this city commission meeting, each of the commissioners, and Lord, I have a special sense to just bless the blue. Bless our policemen, our fire, our, uh, emergency people. Bless them, we pray, and Lord, we invoke your presence in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you very much. Um, next thing on our agenda is roll call. Uh, Mr. Rhodes, please.
Do you hear me? Hello?
Barely.
Barely.
Alright, uh, well, I'll work on that. Uh, Commissioner Burr.
President.
Let's try this. Uh, Commissioner Klinger. Commissioner Wiki.
Here.
Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Malone, you're muted.
She gave a thumbs up.
She's here, we see her. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Lippman.
Here.
Commissioner Good.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Present.
Mayor Heil.
Present.
Okay.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the, there's a proclamation, a small business, uh, Saturday, uh, proclamation, and I'm going to read that aloud to us. And it starts out, whereas the small business sector contributes significantly to the Sturgis economy and employs many city residents, and whereas the owners and operators of small business foster economic growth through the creation of jobs and the production and sale of goods and services for people, and whereas the COVID-nineteen pandemic has greatly impacted our economy, particularly small businesses, causing stress for these entrepreneurs as they struggle to keep their businesses and the jobs they support alive. And whereas the city of Sturgis recognizes these business, businesses, especially during these economic challenging times, as a critical component of restoring, rebuilding, and maintaining a healthy economy in our community now and in the future, and whereas the holiday shopping season is one of the busiest times of the year for retailers, and Saturday, November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, is being observed across the country as Small Business Saturday, celebrating the entrepreneurial spirit of small business owners and highlighting the resourcefulness, ingenuity, hard work, and commitment of these individuals. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the city of Sturgis joins in the Small Business Saturday Initiative and supports small business owners, recognizing their valuable role and can contributions to our co- economy, and be it further resolved, as Mayor of the city of Sturgis, I do hereby proclaim, November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, as Small Business Saturday, encourage, encourage continued support of our small businesses. Proclamation. The next item on our agenda is a, is, are there any visitors on our, uh, cast tonight that would like to bring something to the mission that is not on our agenda?
Once again, for any visitors, uh, if you wish to be recognized to make public comment, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. I see none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Moving on, I will take approval of our agenda.
I move for tonight's, uh, approval of the agenda for November twenty-third, twenty-twenty is presented.
Support.
I have a motion to approve our agenda and support all, uh, excuse me, roll call, please.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes. Motion's approved. I will, uh, now take a, a, a motion to approve our consent agenda, please.
I move, uh, next to approve the, uh, consent agenda, or consent agenda for also November twenty-third, twenty-twenty is presented.
Support. Commissioner Burr.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion to approve the agenda and support. Uh, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is unfinished business and business. Seeing none, we will move to the new business section. And the first item on our new business section is zoning ordinance amendments for accessory structures, retail and manufacturing, and duplexes in R-three. This will be the first week reading. Will.
Thank you, Commissioners. We'll start with accessory building structures and uses. Over the past several months, the Planning Commission has been discussing changes to accessory building structures and uses. Uh, the hopes would be that these provide greater flexibility in permitting these structures. Uh, I'm gonna share my screen and go over the, the changes as we're presenting tonight. Everybody see that?
Yes.
I got it.
Okay, so I'll just go through the list here and kind of go and answer any questions. If you wanna stop me as we go, that's great. Now, we tell the end. Uh, so the first thing we're gonna go through is accessory buildings, uh, shall be no closer than ten feet to any other building. So now we have a few additional exceptions. One would be that they provide a one-hour firewall between the, uh, accessory building and the other buildings. They're one of these smaller items. If it's less than two hundred square feet, it should be a minimum of three feet from the other building on the same lot or a specified Altura in the zoning ordinance. Uh, the next sections in reference to setbacks from the accessory structure to the property line, so it's basically if it's two hundred square feet or less, it can be three feet from any lot line uh, to the accessory structure. If it's greater than two hundred square feet and located in the rear yard, it can't be any closer than ten feet to any lot line. Uh, number five was just changing some, uh, R-one, two, three, and five, it's thirty feet in height. R-four, it's forty feet. R-two was just cleaning up a little bit of language that's in reference to, uh, maybe leasing out your, uh, two-car garage. Number three is, uh, kind of a big one that right there is changing calculation of accessory structures. Basically would take the entire first floor of the principal building, including a, attached garage with the foundation as roof. That would be the maximum allowed accessory structure you can have.
Fifty percent. It's a pers- it's a percentage, is it not? Well, I'm sorry to interrupt, but.
It, it is not. It, based on this recommendation, it would remove that percentage, so basically if it's a single-story residence or a multi-story, it's the first floor now, so the entire first floor.
So with my twenty-four-hundred square feet, I can have a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot accessory structure?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially.
If you meet the height requirements in the, in the, for an accessory structure, so it can't be any higher than fourteen feet in height.
Right.
And it can't be any more than a certain percentage of coverage of lot, of buildings on the lot, and you have to meet the setback requirements.
Oh, okay, so it would take a larger lot to satisfy the larger house having an equal accessory structure.
Correct.
That's just a given, so in other words, those with the bigger houses should conceivably have a larger lot and consequently be able to put a larger accessory structure up.
Yes, sir, and still.
Okay.
Still have to meet the height requirements and the setbacks, but.
Yep.
Um, number five, again, as you hear, we add this, uh, they shall be built with architecture and materials that reasonably complement the architecture and materials of the dwelling. That's some language we've been using in, um, some of the industrial restrictive covenants, just to try to keep the garages that are large to kind of match the house, at least the architecture and materials.
Okay, before you go any further, Will, I'll interrupt again. Number six there, you know, I disagreed with that the last time this ordinance was brought before us. Uh, and, uh, once again, I wanna express my, uh, disagreement with, uh, line six. I know I'm only one, uh, vote here, and so that's not necessarily important, but to, uh, disallow the, uh, uh, structures made from, uh, canopy and/or tarp-like, uh, depending on their structural, um, integrity, I think it's wrong, but that's, uh, but I, I, I couldn't go beyond this section without voicing my opinion. Thank you very much.
Okay, I will move down to number nine. This is in regards to larger lots that would like to take something to the Planning Commission if they, um, if their house doesn't allow them to have the size of structure they want, and they have a large lot, they could take it to the Planning Commission for consideration as long as they, their accessory structures do not exceed ten percent of the, the lot area. And basically it allows the Planning Commission to hear a consideration from, uh, potential, uh, citizen. And that's, that's what I have in accessory structures, and I can answer any questions if anybody else has any. I've got one, Will. Uh, going back to the, the very beginning, um, you had the, uh, accessory buildings and swimming pools should be no closer than ten feet. Um, and one hour fire separation is provided. Um, that sounds a little bit ridiculous. Maybe you should just put, uh, swimming pools under a different, uh, number? Oh, just list swim, swimming pools shall be no closer than ten feet? Yeah, cuz otherwise it reads that you can't have a swimming pool unless you have a one-hour fire separation. So your swimming pool doesn't catch fire. I can make, I can make that its own section if you guys wish.
I, I, I have to agree with Commissioner Burr on that.
Um, if I might weigh in also, um, the swimming pool can't give you one-hour fire, but the, um, the one-hour fire separation. If I have an accessory structure parallel to my residence, that parallel wall will have to be entirely a one-hour wall? Is that the answer? What's the answer to that?
Say it one more time, you broke up at the beginning.
Oh, I'm sorry, and I spent money on my wifi. Okay, um, a, a wall parallel to my home of an accessory structure that I plan to have nine feet from my residence, that entire wall, even if it are, if it is thirty feet, would need to be a one-hour firewall.
That's correct.
Okay. That's a pretty hefty expense to be closer than ten feet to your principal structure. I think then that, uh, that, uh, that's really gonna rule out a lot. Um, okay.
Oh, Will, on the swimming pool part, is that, are you trying to indicate that this is an, uh, uh, enclosed swimming pool?
No. Oh, they were, they were just, they've always been categorized together. So it's accessory buildings and swimming pools.
I mean, I've got a swimming pool. I, I, I don't think it's ever gonna catch on fire.
It's not going to. That's only pertaining to that one section. I think we'll move swimming pools to its own, his own number and be done.
Yeah, create a subset, yeah.
It, it, it makes it easier for people when they're trying to find it, and that's what we're trying to do.
Okay.
So you're gonna break that out for a second reading?
Yep.
Alright.
Alright.
But you're gonna leave no tarp or, um, canvas buildings in there, right?
That is my intention.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any other questions on this?
I have a question for Commissioner Good. Um, have you seen a lot of canopy and tarp structures in the confines of the city?
Uh, just one. That, you know, that I can, uh, be definitive about, um, and that's not to say there wouldn't be if we didn't prohibit them, but we prohibit them. If you're asking me if I've seen any, I shouldn't see a one. Alright, they're prohibited. But I've seen cars and boats covered up with blue tarps that blow a skew in the wind and look worse than a canvas or tarp-like building. And to say that we can't enforce a tarp-like building being in disarray is like saying, uh, we don't want to enforce it because if you have a public nuisance caused by the disarray of a tarp-like structure, you can enforce public nuisance. I'm saying it's enforceable, but it to, I've got photographs of cars covered up with tarps, and I've got photographs with real nice tarp-like structures in other communities. I can share them with you anytime they're on my phone. I've shared them with the city manager. Um, I think that, uh, you know, the exclusion of the canvas buildings for uh, storage of a beautiful fishing boat during the winter months, uh, I think that's restrictions that, uh, need not be in place. That's my opinion. I'll stick with it. Thanks for the time again.
Thank you, John. Now, Will, on each of the, quick question here, on each of these, uh, items under this agenda item, you have a motion. Are we gonna vote on each motion separately as you finish the description?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So are there any other questions on this first item that Will's talking about that proposed changes include on this, uh, portion here? Andrew, I'm gonna need your help on this to see if there's any other questions.
I see none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, are there any questions from our audience tonight?
Once again, if there are any audience questions, please use the raise hand feature. I can recognize you. I see none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And seeing there are no other questions for Will on this first one, uh, we have a motion. What say the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move that Sturgis City Commission consider this the first reading of the amendment to the city of Sturgis zoning ordinance section, one point one one zero five accessory building structures and uses as presented.
Second that, Commissioner Klinger.
Thank you, sir. Um, I have a motion to approve, and roll call, please.
Commissioner Lippman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yay.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil.
Uh, yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Uh, your next section, Will, this would be the retail, retail services, correct?
Yes, sir.
Alright, sir.
Alright, I'm gonna share this screen here as well. Did you see the manufacturing retail?
Yes.
Okay. So this all came about, we had a local business and a local property owner came to us, and they have a large, uh, manufacturing building that was vacant, and they have a kind of a unique retail store that they'd like to place in one. So we took this to the Planning Commission, had quite a bit of discussion on this topic and went through and, uh, made, drafted an ordinance, kind of putting together some restrictions and some requirements to be able to be qualified for this. I can go through that, so the retail use must be a minimum of five thousand square feet. It must be co-located with another permitted or special land use on the site. We came up with a number of thirty percent of the total floor area of the building or the total of all buildings grouped together. Uh, off-street parking was important, that, uh, parking lot was within three hundred feet of the portion of the building in which it serves, and then just the signage requirements of the BH-two, um, zoning district. So, I, happy to answer any questions on this.
Question. Looks like Skip has his hand waving. Skip. Commissioner Lippman.
Have you got an address for this?
What, what they would be looking at right now is the old Lakeland Paper Building over on Prairie.
The big one?
Yeah.
The corner of Prairie and Wenzel?
Yes, okay.
That's a multi-floor, isn't it?
It's multi-floor, multi-b buildings, multi-facilities. It's, it's got a a mix of a lot of different things that could happen over there. So they have one unique location that would suit well for this type of business.
And the entire site is zoned in, is it not?
It is.
How many square feet were they talking about again?
Uh, that, that, that use would use about eight thousand square feet, and I think that building, I think that building's a couple thou- couple hundred thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it should be noted that what, what's proposed is a special land use that would be applied to any building in the manufacturing district.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Klinger has a question.
Commissioner Klinger.
I guess my only question is, is that, uh, being number two, the retail use must be co-located with another permitted or special land use. Um, is, are we leaving that broad and for the sake of any sort of instance like this, uh, obviously trying to operate retail services?
I'm not sure what your question.
Uh, I guess I'm more, I'm, I'm kinda asking, um, uh, how do I word this to make it more succinct, uh? Uh, uh, so it, uh, number two reads, the retail use must be co-located with another permitted use on the site. Uh, must that other permitance be already acquired, or can they be acquired simultaneously? Is, does the first reason have to be, um, amenable to, uh, allow the retail space to also happen? Do they have to have the same uh, purposeful intent together, I guess is what I'm asking? No?
No, I think the, the, the part is basically we can have, um, I, I think that the goal would be to try to protect the existing permitted and special land uses that are available there. To try to limit, so you don't put a strip mall in the manufacturing district.
I guess that's why I'm just trying to make sure, like, get some clarity on.
Yeah, and the key thing with all of this is it's a special land use, so all of it would have to go in front of the Planning Commission for discussion.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's the offer of protection that they would bring, so.
Alright.
That, what it's being used for.
Total, total clarity, then. Appreciate that.
Sure. Mister, Mister Mayor, we have, uh, Commissioner, or Vice Mayor Mullins, which, who wishes to be recognized, and then, uh, Commissioner Wiki.
Right, Vice Mayor, uh, Mullins.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Andrew. Um, going down to number three there, the, uh, retail use shall not occupy more than thirty percent of the total floor area. Um, where did that thirty percent come from? Is that something that's kind of statewide kind of thing for others?
No, this is, I, this is pretty unique, this, this ordinance. So we started at fifty. Planning Commission had quite a bit of discussion and trying to look at some size of vacant buildings and kind of what number that we could start with, you know, to, to put this in place, and then if we come back and we have to make a change, we can always make it. So we started at fifty percent, and there's quite a bit of discussion on it, and it got moved back to thirty percent of the building.
Okay, so that's, that's, could be subject to change at some point, possibly?
It could be subject to change, yes.
Okay, and then on to number four, then, off-street parking will be, um, within three hundred feet. Um, I know the Lakeland Building, there's not very much parking there exactly, but so that limits that building to certain areas only to be, um, retail then?
Well, that building has quite a bit of parking, so if you were off of Wenzel Street, there's a large parking lot that kind of between the two buildings there, they have a large building on the east side and then the main building on the west side. So there's a drive between there with a lot of parking, so the parking lot right there would be what would be utilized for this tenant space. And then they have the huge parking lot, which is off of And then they have the huge parking lot, which is off of Prairie. So what we wanted to do is make sure that their designated parking area was not off of Prairie, which would have been like a thousand feet away.
Okay, so basically anywhere within that building was, is within the three hundred feet then of, of a parking lot, one of the other?
Within, within that, uh, off-street parking lot on that site. So let's, let's just say they didn't have the parking lot next to this tenant space they're trying to create and it was the, their. Uh, off-street parking was a thousand feet away, it wouldn't, it wouldn't comply. They would have to create off-street parking within three hundred feet of that tenant space.
Super, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Wiki.
I was wondering if we'd be able to see a map of the area that this would be in. And also just to see how close it would be to residential areas. The fact that there's gonna be retail going on here.
I'll pull the map up here, Will.
Okay, thanks.
While we're waiting for the map, if I may, um. I recall at the beginning of the meeting, the, uh, mayor read a resolution to, uh. Make every, uh, effort to support our local small business. Uh, this would be a small business. Keep that in mind that you consider this proposal.
New small business, even better.
You should be seeing the map up there now, hopefully.
So, okay.
Yeah, it's where it says Atlantic Packaging.
Yep, so it's the black roofed area.
Off the side where the side parking lot opens.
Yep, and that was important for us to look at when we were discussing this. I think they, the manufacturing district already offers. Protection for the residential that says that you can't have, uh, entrance or an exit. On that unless it's an emergency exit, can't be facing any residential properties. So I think that's, that was important. And again, it. One of the important things is this must go to the planning commission for review, and that's one of the things they have to look at. They have to look at. Make sure that, uh, traffic congestion's there, make sure they're looking out for the public interest.
I might, uh, also add that that residential area to the west of. The building in question. Has been abutted to the manufacturing district since the nineteen thirties. So, um, it's not like, uh. We know or this is gonna ruin what's going on and is retail more intense than manufacturing? Good question.
Mister Mayor, uh, Commissioner Good does have his hand raised too.
Oh, sorry. I just couldn't help myself from going off there.
Touche, Mr. Cook, touche.
No, 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 I didn't know if he had another question I wanted to ask beyond that, so.
Andrew, Will, the, the parking lot that's across the street from there on Prairie, the corner of Prairie and Wenzel, does that also belong to Lakeland? That little parking lot right there?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I thought that was owned by the residential owners next door, the last I thought. Uh, my understanding, my, my father lived at the corner of Norwood and Prairie for a long time. And I swore that property, that parking lot was owned by someone in the neighborhood. Didn't think it was commercial.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, the designated parking area and that would be straight to the east of that tenant space. Which works out nice to have a loading dock in that location. They've got barrier-free access. Uh, building owner's gonna put in bathrooms and do a bunch of work on the space for them.
Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm so sorry for my prior outburst. Um, Fets GIS says that that little parking lot is owned by Clark Logistics. Same company that owns the building across the street.
I just looked at that too, Commissioner Good. Good call.
Lead me to it.
All right. All right, are there any other questions here for Will on the, uh? Retail and retail services in the manufacturing district?
Commissioner Wiki has his hand raised.
Uh, Commissioner Wiki.
Uh, one last question. Do we know what kind of retail's going in there, close to those houses?
So this, what this company does is they buy like Home Depot closeouts. So it's more construction driven, they have, they would be like, uh. Like flooring, maybe some appliances, things like that. So they're buying seconds and returns from like Home Depot loads, but I think. So they already have a small retail space and they, they can't find large enough space for them to utilize, uh, their business.
They already have one here in Sturgis?
They do.
Okay.
It was not a marijuana retail outlet, um, which is not permitted there because of distances anyway.
Okay, any other questions for Will on this topic here? Seeing none, Andrew, uh, is there anybody in our audience, please?
Uh, anyone who wishes to make public comment in the audience, please use the raise hand feature. I see none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, there is a motion here for this, this, uh, one topic here. Uh, what say the commission?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Commissioner Klinger. Uh, I move that the Sturgis City Commission consider this the first reading of amendments to the city of Sturgis. Zoning ordinance sections one point four zero four one zero dash. Manufacturing and one point zero six zero three dash special land use designated pertaining to stores for retail and retail services. In the manufacturing district as presented.
To support, Commissioner Burr.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion to approve and support. Uh, roll call, please. Mr. Rhodes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, sir. Uh, now the section on the two-family dwellings in R three. Well.
Yep, I'm going to share my screen again. Two-family dwellings come up?
Yes.
Okay, this would create a special land use in the R three zoning district for two-family dwellings. Uh, this was removed from R three and up and, uh, was there until two thousand fifteen. It was removed to an overwhelming response from citizens regarding. The conversion of single, single-family homes into two-family dwellings. Currently, two-family dwellings are permitted use in the R four zoning district and a special land use in the R five. Uh, during the master plan process, the planning commission and the, uh, steering committee, they were in favor of looking at. Uh, permitting duplexes or two-family dwellings again in the R three zoning district. Um. Couple of changes, so there currently is a special land use out there. That is in the zoning ordinance and we'd be recommending two changes. Uh, the first one would be that all the driveways and parking areas are solid surface. And the number five basically states that an adaptive reuse of a non-residential building, so it would be one of those vacant commercial buildings. That's if somebody wanted to, uh, turn one of those into a duplex, it, it has the potential to, to work through the planning commission for a special land use, so. I'll kind of go through the minimums that you have to have for a two-family dwelling. So they have to have a minimum of ten thousand square feet for each two-family, uh, dwelling on the lot area. Have to have a minimum width of a hundred feet for each two-family dwelling. And then their, their setbacks are the same as the R three zoning district, so. I will answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the commission?
Uh, Commissioner Good has his hand raised.
Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't know, I was, uh, somewhat intimately involved in the, uh, two thousand fifteen. Uh, uproar, um, and, uh, I noticed that, uh. Will utilize the word overwhelming as an adjective in discussing the response from citizens. Um, I, uh, I understand the special land use does, uh. Bring every item, uh, before the, the planning commission. But, uh, recall when one decision is made. The precedent is set for all following commission, uh, decisions, so. Uh, just a thought to have in mind when you're looking at making a special land use for. Uh, two-family dwellings in the R three, um, not that I am, uh, vehemently opposed to it. Uh, just that, uh, I see that there was an overwhelming response five years ago. Um, what's the response gonna be now? And the Zoom meeting doesn't necessarily, uh, lend itself to bringing out, uh, large. Uh, groups of those opposed, so. Um, just, uh, some comments, uh, with regard to two-family dwellings in the R three zone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Good. Andrew, any other hands?
Commissioner Burr has his hand raised.
Commissioner Burr, please.
Yes, uh, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Good. I know. Many years ago, uh, citizens were concerned that houses would be taken, the older houses would be, were taken. Um, especially in R fours. Um, even in, uh, some of the R threes and converted from a single-family dwelling to. Multi-apartment buildings and family dwellings. And I think that's what the uproar was. I know down on, uh, from the two hundred blocks of South Ottawa. South that was changed to an R three to keep out, um. Rental structures. And I believe that's, uh, a concern for a lot of people. Um, I know there are some, um. Some, uh, two-family dwellings over in the Ivanhoe area, some duplexes. And I suppose if they were built new. And, um, met all the requirements, I don't think it would be objectionable as long as they did. Uh. Retain an appearance to other residential buildings. But, um, I don't think that, uh, this should be in any way construed as an allowance to take a. Older, single-family dwelling and convert it to a duplex.
Vice, Vice Mayor Mullins has his hand raised, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Andrew. Um, um, we're talking about, you know, R three. Dividing up a property for, um, you know, for a two-family dwelling. This is, this is pertaining to one specific property, if I'm not mistaken. And if another property were to ask for the same thing, it would come before the same, um, boards, whether it be. I guess it'd come before both the planning commission and the city commission if they were to approve it, correct?
For the special land use?
Yes.
Nope, it would only go to the planning commission. But a public notice would go out to anybody within three hundred feet of that property.
Okay, so it would, it would still have to go through the same processes as this individual here, other than not coming to the city commission.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
There. So there is a, so, so what you're saying here is there is a, uh, individual who is driving this request, one person.
Well, this request guy was started a little while ago and it took some discussion. It was, it was regarding a commercial building to turn it into a duplex. And we didn't have it in place to allow it at that time. So that was, that was what drove it at that time. I don't believe that, that is still in play, but. Planning commission wanted to move forward with putting something, uh, recommendation to.
Hey, Will, are you at liberty to discuss the, the property at all? I mean, I'm, I'm aware.
I don't think it's in play right now.
Okay.
Mister Mayor, Commissioner Good has his hand raised.
Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this particular issue could have a direct impact on this commission. Um, I live, um, in the, uh. Edge, on the edge of the R three district with, uh, both a commercial building and a residential structure. Immediately to my rear. Uh, the commercial structure is now unoccupied and may very well be, uh, uh. Asked to have a special land use. The other residential structure is quite large and could very well support more than, uh, one family. And so I could be staring four families in the, well, in the mirror, since it's behind me. But anyway, um, so, and once again, uh, as I said, I was, uh, behind, uh, or I was behind. I was involved with that, uh, original, uh, um, question of the two-family. Um, that was down on Michigan Street, Michigan and Walker. Um, the people around there were, um. Quite opposed to it. And as I indicated earlier. Um, once a special land use is given, uh, that precedent has been set and. It, even though each one is considered individually. Uh, each member of the planning commission will have to recall what they did prior, so. Food for thought when we look at the motion for this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mister Mayor, Vice Mayor Mullins has his hand raised.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Uh, thank you, I'm just opening up here. I see, I see no other, I see no other hands like raised. I would, I would like to move that the Sturgis City Commission consider this the first reading of an amendment to the, uh, city of Sturgis zoning ordinance section. One point. Uh, yep, one point zero four zero three dash R three residential and one point zero six zero three. Special land use designated pertaining to two-family dwellings as presented.
Uh, this is Commissioner.
Before, before I get a second, can we let to see if, uh, anybody in the audience has any questions first?
Sure, if there's any member of the audience which wishes to make public comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature to be recognized. I see none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner, uh, Claire, I will take your motion to support if that's what you're going to do.
Yep, second, second to support.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve and a second to support the two-family dwelling in R three.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
The, I see Commissioner Good has his hand raised.
Sorry, Commissioner Good.
Uh, just one final comment, um, down at the bottom of all three of these. I noticed that the, uh, staff recommendations are consider, consider and consider. And neither give approve or disapprove as oftentimes we see. So I would like to direct the question to Will Pritchard, Director of Community Development. If he has, or if he can recall any discussion. From the planning commission with regard to this issue, which may support my position.
Well.
I think the important thing is. The minimum requirements of the lots, you know, these were discussed when, two thousand fifteen, when the house was discussed. That on Michigan, that house would have never been met the requirements of this special land use. If you were to be to create it today, it wouldn't have met the minimum lot size. They wouldn't have had enough adequate parking on that existing site if they were to do that. As far as the planning commission discussion. Um, I think the only, the, like, the big item of discussion was trying to require a site-built duplex. Versus maybe a conversion of a single-family into a duplex. But I think the, in the R three zoning district, we are limited in lots that would allow this. We don't have a lot of, a lot, a lot of lots that are ten thousand square feet, which is bigger than a hundred and twenty-five percent of the minimum. We don't have a lot that would allow the parking requirements. We don't have a lot that would ma- allow a building to be constructed, meet the setbacks. So I'm not sure if I answered that exactly how you wanted.
Well, you answered it fairly well, Will. Well, you answered it fairly well, Will, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the city manager is asking to be recognized.
City manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. So the planning commission recommended approval of all these amendments. I believe the reason why we have consider listed is because we're just doing a first reading, an introduction and first reading.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, like I say, we have a motion to approve and a second to approve the two family dwelling in R three. Roll call, please, Mr. Rhodes.
Commissioner Smith.
Oh.
Commissioner Letman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, no problem. Commissioner Good.
No.
Commissioner Burr.
No.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
No.
There are five yay votes, four nay votes, motion carried.
Thank you, sir. And Will, thank you for your hard work and let the planning commission know thank you also.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the St. Joe County Designated Assessors Interlocal Agreement. Michael.
Thank you, Your Honor. Including your packet is a proposed agreement between City of Sturgis and St. Joseph County. This was a document that was provided to us either county. The agreement is for essentially having a contract for a designated county assessor. And I can explain that a little bit more. There was a an act approved in 2018 and then signed into law in December of 2018, which requires counties to work with local units of government to establish a designated assessor. And what that is is basically through an audit process, if you as a local government are found to be out of compliance with assessing, then a designated assessor that has been appointed comes in, does an audit and makes recommendation. And this is part of that statute that was approved in 2018. So the deadline for the county to have this done is the end of this year. The majority of the local governments have to approve an interlocal agreement. And so we've been having conversations with the county, mostly through the equalization director, who is also proposed to be the designated assessor. And his name is Joshua Simmons. So if you've read the manager's report, I don't think there's anything notable really in the agreement, other than this is something that the county is required to have. The the actual, I think, situation pretty low that we would have to use this contract and bring in a designated assessor through the audit process. There is opportunity to address issues. This is really for an extreme situation. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Act 660 was signed by Governor Snyder and it was in reaction to a township, which was being somewhat defiant in my recollection of this. The civil disobedience got out of hand, as I might say to the city manager. Sometimes it can and should not. But so this act is much similar to assuming control of school districts if they flounder, assuming control of major cities in Wayne County if it flounders. And so this particular action is the state governing body warning us that if we disobey or are not proficient in our taxing, they can take over. If we don't pass this, we're still subject to the same law. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Good. Any other questions for our city manager? See no hands or people waving to me and nothing from Andrew. What about our audience? Any questions in our audience?
Once again, any questions from the audience? Please use the raise hand feature in Zoom to be recognized. I see none from the audience, but I do see Commissioner Burr has his hand raised.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Burr.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So this person was mandated from the state to represent St. Joe County.
No, the county is mandated to have a designated assessor. This is the person that they proposed to fulfill that role.
Do they choose from a variety of people or did this one just come to mind?
This is the equalization director for the county. My recollection is that they, I think they might have done some sort of solicitation to see if anybody else was interested. And I don't I don't believe anybody else was interested. So you have to be certified for one. And, you know, we have, we don't have, and to use a word from Will, we don't have an overwhelming amount of certified assessors in St. Joseph County. So I I think that they offered this person up because they're mandated to have it and they want to meet that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burr. Any other questions, comments? And I think you said the audience, there was no hands in the audience.
That's correct.
Thank you. What say the commission on the St. Joe County Designated Assessor Interlocal Agreement?
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Good.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move the Sturgis City Commission approve the St. Joseph County Interlocal Agreement for designated assessor as presented.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and second, Commissioner Clare, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Letman.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We will move to the the next item on our agenda, which is the Grand Point Power Corporation Power Purchase Agreement. John.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. There's a real brief history in your packet that purchases from this hydro plant date back to 1982. It was originally agreement that the gentleman named Steve Mayer, who had purchased the plant and John Brand, who was the city mayor or city manager, I'm sorry. And the intent was to buy all the energy from this project at a like a percentage below what we were paying I and M. So we have a very long history of purchasing from this particular hydro plant. It's been not a year to year renewal based on costs from I and M. And a man named Tom Barudy wants to have a longer term agreement. So he gave us a draft agreement that was originally at $55 a megawatt hour, which is 5.5 cents a kilowatt hour in a 20 year agreement. I forwarded on to our folks at Michigan Public Power Agency to get their thoughts on the price and the term. They recommended $50 or 5 cents a kilowatt hour in a 10 year term. Mr. Barudy was open to that. City Attorney Roger Berg reviewed it, had a couple of comments. And one was language in the original agreement that said that the city would buy all output. And in the subsequent draft that Tom sent to us that I don't believe made it to your packet, that was added. So it would be us buying all of it. And again, the 20 year was a bit long. It came back to 10 years. So that that change was made. Couple other minor edits in what Tom sent me after the packet had already been sent out. And that was in paragraph one where it talks about delivery of energy. It's just a clarification on the delivery voltage. It doesn't substantively change the the agreement. It just defines what the voltage of the at the delivery point will be. So that was in paragraph one. Paragraph four is where Mr. Barudy added language. It said that the city would buy all the net energy at the delivery point, which matched matched the original agreement. And let's see if there's anything else changing the 20 to 10 and the pricing. And with that, I believe the recommendation is that this 10 year agreement with Grand Point Power Corporation be approved and I will answer any questions that you may have if I'm able.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John on this topic? Commissioner Letman. Is this purchasing coming from the dam generation?
Right, it's hydro power and it's physically located in three rivers. I think at one time it was called the Essex Wire Hydro Plant. But yeah, it's there's a interconnection about six miles of line from that plant over to Covered Bridge Road, about at South River Road. That's where the interconnection is.
Is it roughly for the same amount generation wise that we're getting now or more or less?
As far as the kilowatt hours?
Yes.
Yeah, actually, it will go up a little bit. Mr. Barudy is in the process of rehabilitating the plant. So there are three small turbines in there that are 300 kilowatts each. Right now, only one of them is operating. But the other they're in rehabilitating, so they're they're changing the bearings and whatnot on the turbine itself and changing the controls. So over the next few years, the capacity and the energy output will go up some. But ultimately, it will be back roughly where it was way back when in 1982, around 600 kilowatts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Burr has his hand raised.
Mr. Burr.
No, thank you. My question is kind of similar, but is that going to is that will that be equal to our kilowatt power once our generators are back up and running the way they should be?
This is quite a bit smaller. So when we're at full capacity comparing the two, this is about one third the size of our hydro.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Klinger has his hand raised, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Klinger.
Rick just basically got the answer out that I was looking for, so that's all. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission or comments? See none. How about our audience, Andrew?
Once again, for the audience, if there's any public comment on this issue, please use the raise hand feature. I see none, Mr. Mayor.
Sir. See no other questions? What say the commission on the Grand Point Power Corporation Power Purchase Agreement?
Mr. Mayor, this is Commissioner Klinger. I moved that the Sturgis City Commission approve the purchase power agreement with the Grand Point Power Corporation as present and authorized city manager, Michael Hughes, to sign all necessary documents.
Support. Commissioner Burr.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion to approve and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Letman.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you. That is all the items we have on our agenda. Now we are to the commission and staff comments. Trying to picture this thing here. Let's go to Will. Any other comments?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And again, thank you for the job you do. John, any other comments from you?
Um, yeah, you're talking about.
Good, John Griffith.
Oh. I I have nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Pardon me? You're all set?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for the job you do. Holly.
Comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Mr. Rhodes.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for welcoming me back to Florida, by the way.
And I bet you can't wait to get back down there, right? Andrew.
Uh, next month.
Okay, Andrew.
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you for the job you're doing with us. Michael.
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. And that should be it for all our staff. Let's go back down here. Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. One, how are we doing? Mike Hughes, how are we doing on the fire pit?
Okay, I'll make sure I wasn't on mute. So right now, we're waiting for the design. And once we have that, we'll apply for our permit. But it's been slow going, so we're waiting. He's in place.
Thank you. Oaklawn, when the ground freezes before the snow, can we get Bojan out there with their slinging machine and sling some sand down there? Just a thought. Carol Wallman's resignation. Ken Roats, you indicated in the consent agenda that we'd be sending her a letter of thanks or whatever. So Carol Wallman was the citizen from the city of Sturgis, representative on the Sturgis District Library Board. And so she needs to be replaced. So all other commissioners, I'm sure the clerk is looking at applications at the current time. But if you know an interested library patron that might want to do that, you might want to encourage them to give the clerk an application. And lastly, we did the Styrofoam recycling. I only did half of it. We were lucky enough to get additional volunteers. I was really thrilled to see all those volunteers out there. I hope each of those volunteers might be able to get a letter of thank you from the city city manager. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. I forgot one of our staff, Public Safety Director, Ryan.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I didn't mean to miss you, but you're between two people. You sort of blended in. Back down here to Commissioner Malone.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Clare.
Um, no, nothing from me. Someone was just surprised to see Santa. That was all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burr.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Just it's nice to finally see what y'all look like without the disguises on.
All right. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Letman.
Well, I've read the temperature on the thermometer, saw some spitting snow. Did not see any accumulation yet, but I'm waiting on spring.
Good comment. Commissioner Wiki.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So are you feeling better?
I'm feeling much better.
Great. And Vice Mayor Mullins.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number one, John Griffith is still here, correct?
Yes.
Okay, John, I just want to thank you for your years of dedication to the city and the electric department. I'm not sure when your last day was. I didn't know if it was if you'd have another meeting or not. But I wanted to to tell you that I really appreciate what you've done for the city and and you're going to be greatly missed, not only as the you're going to be greatly missed, not only as the city, um, you know, electric supervisor or, or, uh, uh, I don't know exactly the title exactly, but, but the overseer of the electric department, but also as a neighbor. You, it was always, uh, pleasurable to see you, your wife, your kids, all that stuff, dogs, whatever, coming up and down the streets and, uh, hope your time up north. And if I see you at a diff, at a future commission meeting before you leave, um, take this as my, uh, you know, bon voyage for you.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
The, the other thing I want to mention is, is the job that, that Will, uh, Pritchard has done in our building department. Um, with all these things, he brought three things to us tonight. Him and the planning commission both deserve um, major applause for, uh, the work that they're, that they're doing. Will, since you've came on and I had, uh, Mike Hughes tell us that he's not seen anybody do as much work as you, as, as bi- as busy as you are and the things that you're doing to improve. Um, uh, the, the way that people do business in the city of Sturgis, improving that for, for individuals is to be applauded. And I applaud you and the entire planning commission, which I have great respect for. So thank you for your work as well. Um, I am Benazak, um, Director of Public Safety. I just want to say I saw you walk through city hall today. You're, you're off crutches and you're looking mighty fine, my man. I'm hoping that everything is going well with you. You look, you look great. I just wanted to throw that out there. And last but not least, to, uh, city, or to the city attorney, Roger Berg. Very, very, very good to see your face in here tonight, although, uh, TJ Reeves with a much prettier face to look at, so. With that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You just for a moment here? I'm not sending TJ back again. I'll just send Eric back next time.
All right, thank you all. Um, basically I'm looking forward to the Thanksgiving holiday that's coming up. Um, we, I've been putting a lot of hours in through this, through the last several, uh, several almost months now for the Medicare season. So I think I get a day to sleep in finally. And so that's, that's why I'm looking forward to the, uh, upcoming Thanksgiving holiday. And at this time, I will take a motion to go into a closed section, closed session to discuss purchase of property.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to, so, and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
No.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes.
We're in closed session.
Okay. Now, are we going to another? Yeah. Okay, you want to explain what we got to do, Andrew? I thought everybody was leaving anyway.
Well, just like, just like we had in the past, close out of this meeting, there should be a link from Mike to go into the closed session. Open that one and we'll go from there.
Alrighty.
Give, give me a few minutes. I need to go take care of this monkey. You are definitely monkey. Come on, monkey.
Yep, you're all set.
Jack and Ray?
Yep, we're going to close out.
Okay, what I did just hit leave?
Yep, hit leave and then you got to get into the link from Mike.
What the heck's that?
Should be in your email.
Oh.
Delete this one and then you got to go to the one in your email from Mike Hughes.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Yep. Okay.
You haven't left yet, Skip.
Hey, I'm looking for the thing I got to click on to go to.
Oh, I, I might have screwed you up. If you go, uh, hold on a second. Let me try something here. All right, should be in the bottom, um, bottom right-hand corner in red.
Okay, we're meeting, yeah?
Yep, click that.
Bless you, Santa.
What? Who is that?
Who does it look like?
Santa.
It does look like Santa, huh?
Santa's already have, always had big beards.
They usually do. You gotta wait for everybody else to come back, though. We're down one.
Santa, lady, actually lives at the North Pole.
He's got quite a few books behind him. Do you think he likes to read?
Mm-hmm.
It's one of the most important things to Santa, is that all the kids in the world know how to read.
Yes, they'll do a wish sometimes, our kids will be good.
He is watching all the time.
Mm-hmm.
He's even on the screen right now, watching you.
I only look, I only work one night a year. So I have to have something to do with my time, so I spend it reading.
He reads all the time. Any day he's not flying, it's like he's reading. Okay, you too.
Yeah, I don't think that is Santa. He will deliver presents.
Uh, we're just trying to get Commissioner Smith into the meeting.
Looked like someone wasn't coming back due to a frozen screen.
Please don't pull, you're gonna pull.
I think we're still missing, uh, Mr. Lippman too, aren't we?
And Commissioner Malone, is she coming back?
I don't think so. She's having, uh, computer issues.
Okay. Do you wanna shoot a quick text to, uh, Commissioner Lippman?
I'll give him a call.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Okay. All right, should we, uh, we're back in open session. We are missing two of our commissioners, Commissioner Lippman and, uh, Commissioner Malone. This Commissioner Malone looks like she's having some computer issues, so she may not be back with us. Do we wanna wait to see if Mr. Lippman's coming back, or do we wanna go ahead and I will take a motion on our discussion of purchasing property?
There, as long as we have a quorum, we could proceed.
All right. Thank you, Roger. Um, I will take a motion on the purchasing of property. Does everybody remember what Roger said?
Certainly do.
All right.
Clerk, the clerk wouldn't mind, uh, having Roger, uh, repeat some of his, uh, thoughts.
Perfect.
You're on, Roger.
The thoughts on the motion or other thoughts?
Let's, let's do the motion first.
That's probably a better way to go. Um, I think the, uh, commission could entertain a motion to authorize the city to enter into an agreement with the Gunnets for the acquisition of an, uh, Floyd, uh, easement for Floyd's rights, uh, up to the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary related documents following final review by city attorney. So long.
Okay, I got a motion and support. Do you wanna read the motion back one more time? Uh, Ken?
You need it read back, I'm, I'm-
Does anybody need, needed to write me read back?
No.
All right, we have a motion to approve and support. Um, roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yep.
Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Smith.
Yep.
Commissioner Lippman. We'll come back to Commissioner Lippman.
Thank you.
Which are good.
There he is.
Hey.
There he is.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Lippman, we made a motion to, uh, a motion was made to authorize the city into entering an agreement. Voting yea or nay?
Yea.
And Mayor Hile.
Yes.
Oh, Commissioner Wiki.
Yeah, yes, and they, uh, probably should look into the stilts thing, too.
If it says some nice pictures. Motion carries?
Yep.
Okay, motion carries. Are there any other comments before I close the meeting?
Happy Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving to all.
Give you all- Happy holidays to all of you guys, and I hope you all be safe.
Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner, uh, Malone is back.
Nice.
I agree, yes.
Motion carries. All right, welcome back. And again, yes, uh, happy Thanksgiving to all, and I hope everybody's really safe, uh, with this. And, um, I'm gonna close the meeting. We are closed, we adjourned.
Gotta watch your diet. God for the diet.
Good night, for-